Good evening. This is the regular joint meeting of the Oakley City Council. Oakley City Council acting as the successor agency to the Oakley Redevelopment Agency, Oakley Public Financing Authority. This meeting is called to order at 6:30 PM. Roll call. Councilmember Meadows, oh my gosh.
Councilmember Meadows is here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Fuller.
Here.
Vice Mayor Shaw.
Here.
And I am Mayor Williams, present. We are now going to hear the Pledge of Allegiance, read by Anna Hamena Escobedo Rivaldo, a student at Vintage Parkway Elementary School. She is a fifth grader. She lives with her mom, dad, little brother Roberto, and baby sister Ariana. Anna is a big sister and a responsible student and friend. She loves to play with her new dog. She enjoys drawing, reading, and playing with her friends. Anna is part of our leadership team, and she attends meetings, asks questions, and helps at different school-wide events like Recycling Wednesdays, Harvest Carnival, and supporting during our scarf sale to raise money for families. Anna loves math, especially with multiplication and fractions. Anna is a great student and model for her peers.
Please join us in the pledge. Please stand, salute, pledge. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated.
All right, on 1.3, a proclamation recognizing Martin Luther King Jr. Day to be accepted by Michael DePray and Odessa LaFrancois from East Contra Costa County, NAACP. If you can come meet me up at the podium. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. devoted his life to advancing equality, social justice, and opportunity for all, and whereas Dr. King's teachings can continue to guide and inspire us in addressing challenges in our community, and whereas the King Holiday and Service Act enacted in 1994 designated the King Holiday as a national day of volunteer service, and whereas the Universal Declaration of Human Rights empowers us all, the principles enshrined in the Declaration are as relevant today as they were in 1948, and whereas since 1994, millions of Americans have been inspired by the life and work of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. to serve their neighbors and communities on the King Holiday, and whereas serving on the King Holiday is an appropriate way to honor Dr. King, meet local and national needs, bring our citizens together, and strengthen our communities and nation, and whereas the King Day of Service is the only federal holiday commemorated as a national day of service, and offers an opportunity for Americans to give back to their communities on the holiday and make an ongoing commitment to service throughout the year, and whereas each of us can and must contribute to making our communities better with increased opportunity for all of our citizens. Now, therefore I, Anissa Williams, Mayor of the City of Oakley, on behalf of the City of Council, do hereby proclaim Martin Luther King Jr. Day 2024 as a day of service, and call upon the people of the community to pay tribute to the life and works of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.
Thank you. I want to thank you to the mayor, and thank you for the city council. This is something that I think that is so important right now in our nation with everything going on in the world. We will be hosting MLK breakfast at the only school in Far East Contra Costa County named after Dr. King. We'll be in Pittsburgh, eight o'clock in the morning. We'll have a lot of youth and a lot of people participating, and we hope that you guys can join us. Nothing else has to be totally educational. Our theme this year, we won't go back. We cannot keep turning back the clock. Thank you so much. Once again, you're welcome to attend. Want to see everybody other than Councilmember Fuller?
I'm new, guys. I'm new. I'm getting it. All right, at this time, we're on item 2.0, public comments. Public comments will be heard for items not on the agenda. I do have public speaker cards submitted. To submit a public comment, please complete a blue speaker card located in the lobby and submit to the city clerk. The time limit to speak is three minutes. The time limit is monitored by the timer located in front of my seat. When one minute remains on the timer, it will beep once as a reminder to complete comments before your time expires. Please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, or other outbursts so that everyone may have an opportunity to be heard. Note that due to provisions of state law, the council may not engage in dialogue regarding comments. Staff may be directed to respond to persons making public comments. Our first speaker is Conan Moats.
Good evening, Mayor Williams and Oakley City Council. So there's a couple of issues that I'd like to address tonight. The first has to do with being in the heart of the delta and making sure that we protect our natural resources. So near where I live, there have been people poaching salmon. It's kind of funny, poached salmon? No, not really that funny at all. They have been gutting them and leaving them there. We need to be vigilant. The salmon fishing has been illegal for over a year now. If you see someone poaching, please call Caltip from Department of Fish and Game and report what you saw. The number is 1-888-334-CALTIPE. That number once again is 1-888-334-C-A-L-T-I-P. Thank you. The second issue I wish to address has to do with a personal attack that I think needs to be addressed publicly. So we all know that lovely website next door where people share goodwill and good vibes only. Well, there was an issue about potential cannabis growing as a business in Oakley, and Councilmember Fuller was giving a negative reasons why he didn't think it was a good idea, which seems totally reasonable, but attached to his argument was a PDF that was about Councilmember Henderson that was totally unrelated. It had to do with his tenure on the Fire, East Contra Costa Fire District. So someone asked, well, what does this have to do? And I responded that to me, it seemed like a smear tactic, that it was totally unrelated and had nothing to do whatsoever with the issue. So in my response, I said that, you know, smear tactics are usually something I wouldn't engage in, but I attached a link to Dr. Fuller's sordid affair that he had when he was a board member in the West Covina School District that I thought was nothing to do with, but just making the example that it's not. It's not good politics. I got a quick response to that, which was quickly taken down, but it was very offensive. He compared me to a guy named Mike Spence, who died, in his own words, in a flea bag hotel of a drug overdose. He said it was sad. I don't think he thought it was sad. He said that Mr. Moats, and I quote, "is similar in stature and temperament to this man." So if you're going to judge me by my appearance and make a connection to that, what does that suggest about all of us? And this is intemperate, rude, disparaging remarks towards the public, staff, city council, all of it. I recommend resignation or censure of Dr. Fuller.
Thank you, Mr. Moats. Next up is Bud Chaddick.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. I'm here today to try to get your help in protecting one of our resources, and my concern is Marsh Creek. As was brought up, we have several poachers that are stealing eggs to then sell to people fishing sturgeon that to then to still sell to the eggs as caviar, and it's all poaching in a big ring. Needs attention, needs attention real quick. This is the first year I've seen so many large fish come into it, and it's because commercial fishermen, sport fishermen abide by rules, generally speaking. They're shut down for a year and a half for a reason. We had seven or eight years of drought. These fish suffered. And now they're suffering at the hands of various homeless and otherwise people going down there, stripping the eggs, selling them, or just ripping their guts out before they spawn. I counted 25 fish in a pool one day, and next day they were gone. Okay, that's a federal thing. That's a state thing. It's very serious. I don't know if people really think so. But the main thing I'm here for is the protection of Marsh Creek as a thing that we keep talking about Oakley being family-friendly, environmentally-friendly, making these wonderful parks and everything. You have a resource that's been there for thousands of years. And just like I mentioned before, just like that grizzly bear is going to disappear. We shouldn't even have that on the flag. The animal doesn't exist here anymore. And the thing is, we, a few of us have went down fighting these people, taking their nets out of the water, either volleyball nets, the construction orange net that they use, crab hoops, spearing, clubbing, damming up the creek. We tore down dammed-up areas that they did to take these fish. Next day, I saw those same fish out because they had certain marks I recognized. But then again, by the third day, they found them, and they were gone. Okay? Now, this is just one pot of fish that goes through. You have some die naturally and whatnot, but it needs to be protected as a resource and looked at that way. I've got, I'd like to get your help in getting these other agencies, the police, which we have went to, Fish and Game, and other resources, and I've talked to some. There's also, we've had our lives threatened by basically talking weapons, as in guns. We've had tires slashed by these people, and I never see anybody down there once we make a complaint. And they sit in front of like about a 12-year-old boy at Cusson House that one time. You want these children to go down there to use that resource for that? So let's try to get, I need your help to get other people engaged and involved to make this better.
Thank you, Mr. Chaddick. Just a question. Can we, can we get a list of the resources of who we can contact for like next steps on something like that?
Sure, we can definitely look into that.
Thank you. All right, next up, I think it says Mary Black. Okay, perfect.
Good evening, members of the council. I'm here this evening representing the East Contra Costa Historical Society, and we just came to wish you a happy 2024, and to let you know that we're looking forward to working with your community this year and being involved with your events, and certainly welcoming your schoolchildren to the museum and being as engaged with your community as we can be. I would like to have brought for each of our councilmembers one of our 2024 calendars. Oakley is featured on three of these months. In this calendar, we do a then-and-now kind of format where we show a picture of the original building as it was built, the building as it is today, and a bit of history of the building so that we're building some local history information for all of our community. So you have your, does anyone recognize this? Oh, you can't speak. It's the co-op, the Rancho Co-op. You also have this wonderful building that is now the Bistro, which used to be the Del Barba General Store, or the Cash Store, as it was known in those days. And you also have Malakotz Market, which is, shows it when it was built and as it appears today. So I would like to leave these for each of you to enjoy and learn a little bit of your local history. Q, I'm sorry, I opened yours so I could show the thing because I knew you.
Thank you. Okay, we're now moving on to item three, councilmember comments. Do any councilmembers have comments?
May I, may I make an introductory comment? So this is the first time we are featuring this, and I know some of you have asked for a space where you may make a comment. The thinking is that you are all members of this community. You are all, in fact, you have to be residents of this community, otherwise you would not have your offices. So you have as much right to provide a public comment as anyone else, but we are separately calling this out. But you have to, if you make a comment, follow the same rules the public follows. So we will have a three-minute timer. You may speak on anything that is within our jurisdiction. There will not be responses, so just as the public gets to speak and you have to listen, any of the other councilmembers will have to listen. The only caveat is that because you are a councilmember, you can request an item for a future agenda. As you know, that's part, that's long been our practice. So if a member of the public were to come and request an item for the agenda, then we could have a brief dialogue when they do that. The difference is because we have a section for you to formally do that, then if you, this is not the time for you to ask for a future agenda item, is what I'm saying. So again, you may make comments. I know, I think that was Councilmember Meadows' idea, I'm sure, to put me on a timer. So anyway, I'll stop there, and I just want to make clear this is new. You have a right to speak as any member of the public, but you do have to follow the public, and there is not going to be a back-and-forth dialogue.
Any comments? Councilmember Fuller.
Yes, I'm going to say something about Mr. Chaddick that maybe not everybody knows, but when it comes to fish and water, Mr. Chaddick was a fisherman, a tuna fisherman off of San Pedro, and that is the most risky job as far as death is concerned in the United States as a fisherman. And I say that, I don't know, he may say, I wish you had never said that, but when I say that, he knows his water, he knows his fish, he knows how to take care of fish, and when he comes up here, he's got a very clear picture of what needs to be done. Poachers are a menace throughout California, throughout the nation. And it's not just fish. It's everywhere. It's big business. It involves a lot of money. It is dangerous, and the bottom line is we, as a governmental body, need to make sure that we stand strong against insecurities. So, thank you.
Okay, seeing no other comments, we'll move on to item four, the consent calendar. Before I ask for if anybody wants to move it forward, we have not received any online comments, but does anybody in the audience wish to pull any consent items or make comments? Okay? Are there any items that the council would like to pull for discussion, or is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move approval.
Okay, I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, passes five zero. All right, we're on to item five, public hearings. There are no public hearing items. Number six, regular calendar. There are no regular calendar items. So we will move on to item seven, reports. First up, 7.1, our city manager.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the city council. I have a few items to report. We're excited to announce that we are starting up the Leadership Academy again. This will be the first time we have held a Leadership Academy since 2019. The Oakley Leadership Academy will be a free, interactive civic education program for Oakley residents. Interested in learning about city operations, it will provide a look into the workings of Oakley with the goal of developing civic leaders and building a stronger community through well-informed and engaged residents. Participants must be Oakley residents aged 16 or older. More information in the registration form or on our website at www.cioakley.ca.us/leadershipacademy, or from the city's homepage, you can click on the public information button. And we're excited to announce this. It's going to start up in April, and we're going to have the department directors, the police chief, as well as my office presenting at various sessions, and it will culminate with certificates being passed out at a future city council meeting. So look for that to start up in April. Also, late last year, we brought forward the RFP for our climate action plan. Just wanted to let you know that has been released to the public. We are soliciting feedback on that, and it closes on Wednesday, February 7th at 5:00 PM. And lastly, you may have noticed in the screen with the slide deck running through that we do have our 25th anniversary logo up. It is our 25th anniversary this year, and we're excited to announce that we will be issuing a list of events very shortly for the community. We're hard at work. Mayor Williams and Councilmember Meadows are part of the 25th Anniversary Planning Committee, and we've met now twice, and we're going to be meeting again. But we're excited to bring to the community a series of events throughout the year to celebrate our very special year here. So that concludes my report. I would like to note, though, under item B, we have attached the business license report for the month of December for your viewing pleasure. Thank you.
You're quick on that button now. Moving on to 7.2, this is reports from council liaisons. Mr. Councilmember Meadows.
All I have is in mid-December, I attended the CCTA meeting. The rest of the month was quiet.
Vice Mayor Shaw.
I attended the Tri Delta Transit meeting, the swear-in for our newest Oakley officer. A CalCity's Policy Committee orientation, I will be serving as, on the CalCity's Public Safety Policy Committee, and this afternoon, I attended the Board of Supervisor Reorganization Lunch hosted by Federal Glover in Antioch.
I also attended Tri Delta Transit. Of course, I'm new to all of this now, so I can't find my notes on it. The interesting thing that we talked about is that Tri Delta Transit is taking a position against the MTC, ABAG, they would like to, if public transit funding is stripped out of it, which is being proposed right now, they would like to take a stand, so they actually hired a lobbyist. So they have some opinions on it, but they want to see how the final bill shakes out before they take a full stand. The other, I'm also on a policy committee. I am on the public quality. It talks about how we work on mental health issues, on the unhoused, things like that. So we just had our general meeting where we adopted the following priorities. Safeguarding local revenue and local economic development, strengthening climate change resiliency and disaster preparedness, improving public safety in our communities, expanding investments to prevent and reduce homelessness, and increase the supply of affordable housing. They've also have lots of budget asks, especially because there's going to be some funding shortfalls, and they're asking that cities be protected. So we're all sort of marching to that same drum, regardless of which policy committee we sit on. Our next meeting is January 18th. That's going to be unique to each policy committee, so there'll be a little bit more info. And I think that is all I have for my reports right now. Item B, request for future agenda items. Councilmember Fuller.
Yes, I just have a request more than an agenda item with Mr. Cole, but I think there's some differences, strong differences on the dais whether a councilmember can say they strongly oppose an issue, and someone, at least one, is saying that opens the city up to a multimillion-dollar lawsuit, or if that would be deemed appropriate, especially when you look at other politicians. So I would like a clarification on that matter. I understand the quasi-judicial. It's not good to walk into when you're sitting on a planning commission violation or a code violation to say, "I'm going to vote no" before you go in and allow the person to plead their case, but I would like that clarification on that. And in saying that, I'm glad Ms. LaFrancoi, I'm sorry, but Odessa is here. MLK really deserves it. It is a good breakfast. It is a good breakfast. It's a good time to go over there. The, and I want to add something. I'll add, I don't know how many know it, but she, Odessa is, I'm going to say Odessa, but retired for 24 years, 24 years with the US Navy. So when you say she's a veteran, she's a real veteran. So thank you.
Okay, so I don't think I heard a request for an agenda item.
Unless there's a second on, you want me to provide some report on the topic Councilmember Fuller raised, I could do that perhaps as a report under the city managers if you want some general discussion on that topic, but that's up to you.
Right, well, not to interrupt, well, to interrupt, but to say, I'm happy with just a written report, but some sort of legal opinion on what the matter is.
Is that something that can be handled offline, or you want that report brought back to the city council?
I would appreciate if all the city councilmembers received it, let's put it that way.
So does that need a second for just a report?
Yes.
I'm a second. Sorry, Aaron, sorry, Councilmember Meadows.
Okay, sounds like it was first and seconded, so.
You got, I don't think I have time because of the cutoff for our next, which is technically Friday, but so it'd probably be two meetings from now.
If you're asking, I'm content if it takes two months.
Okay, I'll get it to you one way. Yeah, well, we'll get it.
Thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor Shaw.
Okay, a little bit of backstory on my future agenda item. We just recently got in our weekly manager email, the guidelines and protocols, and we have our upcoming governance training, and that sparked me to go back and look at the governance training from 2021. And while I was there in the audience, I wanted to re-watch it again. And a running theme in that meeting when there was some disagreements were, we need to hold each other accountable peer-to-peer. And what I'm asking or looking for support on is for the city attorney to bring back what we have as councilmembers that if we were to need to do that, and not that we would, but what are but what, what are our things that we can, what, what are our, how do we hold each other accountable? What, what does that look like from top to bottom? What can, um, can we as a council do if we feel like that has been, um, the guidelines are not being followed or if somebody does something that would generate a response from the council? And we have our training coming up in February, so I don't know timing on that. I know we have our governance training. I just feel like with the last one, we had a lot of conversation about it is our responsibility to hold each other accountable. And so I would like to know what that level of accountability can be.
I have, I will second that, but the one thing that I would ask to go along with that is, uh, the procedure for censure, what's involved, the full detail of the censure procedures, full detail of the, um, how it's handled, um, with the, with the council member, how it's handled with others, the recourse, if there is a censure, and how much is that involved and how much will be involved with the, uh, with the city? So there's a clear understanding if you're going to start taking potshots that it isn't just a quick, quickly, an easy deal.
And, and just to be clear, I'm not, I'm not speaking solely censure. I would like to know what levels, all of the above, so.
I, I do believe that a censure would be covered in what you've requested. So I do think there's, I think Dr. Fuller and what you have requested, I, I can cover that. So I will, it sounds like there's a, a second, so I'll cover that. And then I, uh, I should be able to do that before our February meeting. And I, and I will because I think it's important for that. So I'll do that.
Okay, great. Seeing no more future agenda items. Um, moving on to item eight, work sessions, there are no work session items. Number nine, closed session, there are no closed session items. So now we adjourn. Thank you everyone for joining this meeting. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned. The next regular meeting will be held Tuesday, January 23rd, beginning at 6:30 PM here in the council chambers.